Welcome to our meeting this morning. I see in our audience we have Mayor Terry Summers from Mount Hope. Welcome.
Rest in.
Do I have any other elected officials in the audience that I don't recognize?
I'm Dave Unruh.
Oh, hey.[13.54][13.54](laughter) I know I'm getting older, but I do remember you.
Okay.
Where'd Kate Flavin go? I don't know if you were gonna bring it up, but yesterday Kate was nominated for Distinguished Young Professional Award finalist for this area. Congratulations, Kate.[32.04][32.04](applause) She and Lauren Clary, who was on my Citizens Advisory Board, was nominated. Jordan Walker, who was one of my students back when I was a teacher, was nominated. And two other folks that I didn't know, but I wanted to congratulate Kate especially. Now, did you have anything else this morning before we get started?
Nothing else.
Very good. I hear we're going to learn about fire.
We are. So, a few months ago, we had talked about fire and fire agreements. And at that time, we started, I asked Rusty to start doing some formal analysis based off of the discussion of the commissioners. And with that, in the end, give you some options of the way ahead. And we're gonna provide that for you today. So, without further ado, I'll let Rusty give you the opening primer.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, Chief Leake is going to present information on the sharing of resources between area fire departments through long scanning aid agreements. He will touch briefly on the financial state of the fire district. He will discuss the mutual benefits of aid agreements and the disparities that exist within the current aid agreement system of operation. Finally, he will offer some options for consideration with an eye toward the long-term value of evolution and sustainability of professional fire protection, specialized rescue, and medical first response across Sedgwick County. This is not a simple issue. There is not a single solution to the challenge of professional contemporary fire service delivery countywide with the diverse political, economic, and individual philosophies and opinions on the value of different fire service models. There are things that we have done and can do internally to improve our position, but the long-term solution will require cooperation and collaboration by in between Sedgwick County and the municipalities and townships within Sedgwick County. I want to recognize Chief Leake and his staff and the finance and budget staff who spent much time researching, analyzing, and crafting documentation for today's presentation. Everyone strive to produce a fair and balanced report to inform subsequent discussion and further action. With that, Chief Leake is going to walk you through a high-level overview of this report which you have so that you can go back and consume that at your leisure.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. I'd like to recognize some of our partners here this morning, too. I think we have Mount Hope and Colwich and Mulvane. Got some fire chiefs here, so thank you for being here this morning. Of course, the staff, Deputy Chief Tagney and Captain Kevin Nelson. So, they were instrumental in helping put this paper together. Like Rusty said, a few months ago, the fire district was tasked with reviewing our automatic aid and mutual aid agreements and also coming up with some options. So, as we start off with this live presentation, if I can get this to work. Kate showed me this yesterday. There we go. We have 12 municipal fire departments, full-time professionals, Sedgwick County, City of Wichita, and the City of Derby. Part-time volunteer, we have Cheney, Clearwater, Colwich, Mount Hope, Mulvane, Sedgwick, and Valley Center. And then, we also have Viola and Bentley that is non-competitive because they're in the fire district. So, the fire district is funded by fire tax of 18.3 mils for county fire services, annual budget of about $18 million. Okay? Get this right. We did analysis and valuation of current and prospective automatic aid and mutual aid agreements, the assistance provided and received. We also evaluated annexation and future viability. And we're currently looking at our financial situation, which looks pretty good right now. Our assessed values have grown. Fire district is looking pretty good this next year and the following year. We're pretty excited about that. Lindsey told me I could spend some money, so we've tried to do a little bit of that. A Kansas Mutual Aid Compact, this is a system that allows us to have local written agreements with our partners. So, we'll have automatic aid and mutual aid agreements. And we fall up under this Kansas Mutual Aid System Compact. And this allows us to have those written agreements for automatic aid and mutual aid. And just to break that down a little bit, I know you've heard it before, but automatic aid is you're on the dispatch. So, when a structured fire comes in, if one of our partners are part of that automatic aid, they're automatically dispatched. Mutual aid is a communication. I have to ask for help or someone has to ask for help from us. Okay? Responses with full-time professional decreases our amount of resources when we respond to a call. And basically, what that means is, a typical house fire in the fire district is three engines, two tenders, a squad, safety officers, mobile air, and all these different apparatus to respond to the house fire. Well, with a full-time professional, we can remove one of our engines and allow one of their engines to come in and be a part of that service model for the citizens. And so, that's what the full-time does. Responses with the part-time volunteer, it doesn't always decrease our amount of resources. It could potentially, but if they're not staff, if they're not available, then that doesn't become a part of the dispatch. But if they are, then they'll be added to that dispatch complement. Okay? This is the heat map, and you'll see they're located in the room as well. This kinda tells where the calls are happening, where we're going. You'll see the dark purple is our light purple, that's Sedgwick County. And we're responding, and you'll see the clusters there. Some areas, we're responding a lot. Those are the areas that are close to the city. You'll see more of that as we get into the mutual aid given and automatic aid given. Automatic and mutual aid given from 2013 to 2017 for structured fire calls. You'll see that Wichita is 79.55% of the time. And then, the numbers really drop drastically after that. With Cheney, Clearwater, Colwich, Derby, Mount Hope, Mulvane, Cedric, and Valley Center. And a white paper was prepared, and I believe you have a copy of that. And also, the white paper talks about excluding Wichita, it's less than 5% of aid given to our other partners. Yes, sir?
Does the paper, the proposal presented, does the paper include absolute numbers?
Yes.
I think that's on page nine of the...
Okay. All right. And then, automatic mutual aid received over a five-year period, structured fire calls. Wichita leads that. They've come in and helped us 69% of the time. And then, we go down to Cheney, Clearwater, Colwich, Derby, Mount Hope, Mulvane, Cedric, and Valley Center. Medical calls, automatic mutual aid received, Wichita again, 58.23. And then, it drops down drastically. Cheney, Clearwater, Colwich, Derby, Mount Hope, Mulvane, Cedric, and Valley Center. And then, we go into some options. So, after reviewing the agreements, we were tasked with, what do we do? Do we stay the same? Do we look for other options? And so, as a group, we came up with some options. One is to secure the borders through legislation for the fire district because we constantly lose ground to annexation, which doesn't help sustain the fire district. So, we talked about locking in those borders. Another option, countywide fire district, consolidate all the volunteer departments into a district-wide fire department. We train the same, we do everything the same, and we become one countywide fire district. So, that's one option. We also are exploring functional consolidation with the City of Wichita beyond the hazmat and technical rescue teams. Those teams are already working together. And so, functional would be kinda side-by-side, working together. And then, last but not least, a whole-listed type approach where we have one fire department. So, it's not so much functional, it's just one fire department. We wanna address the inconsistencies among the contracts, provide consistency, standardize the agreements. And what we wanna do there is make sure we have the right equipment coming for the right call. And so, we just don't wanna have agreements out there that say, they look alike, but they don't really address the need or examine the needs for each individual. So, wanna make sure we standardize those. And then, option four does not address issue of improving resource allocation, it's just status quo. SEFD will continue to disappropriate response to the calls within the City of Wichita and other areas without their taxing authority. Option five, standardize agreements with a fee schedule. Revised agreements including fee schedules, fee schedule to potentially improve resource So, those are the five options. I know it's a short presentation, the white paper gives you a lot more information, but I'll stand here for questions. And I also have Chief Tagney and Captain Kevin Nelson that worked on this as well that will assist me if I can answer the question.
Well, thank you, Chief. Do we have questions from the commissioners? Now, after I've had a chance to read it, process it, we'll probably need to have some more discussions, but I appreciate, I personally appreciate options, you know, a variety of options. Look at the look at, take a look at all the data, and we'll probably have some more conversations.
If you look, the options start on page 20. In it, they also have put some pros and cons to each one of these options. So, once you read it, the paper gives you a lot more detail. Rusty and his team and chief and the fire department have done a great job of putting this paper together. That briefing doesn't do it justice. So, if you get some opportunity when you read it, and we need to come back together to talk about it some more, you may need to do it, just because it's gonna take you a little while to absorb what they're saying there and look at the numbers.
Yeah, I agree. I received the paper last night, skimmed it last night, but I printed it out this morning so that I could spend some more time reviewing it. I agree that we need to digest this before we try and even think about making any kind of suggestions on which way to go. We all need to talk about it, we need to talk about it with some of our partners. I know there's some of them in the audience today that are very interested in anything that comes out of this, but I don't think we're ready to move forward with any decisions whatsoever at this point.
Sure.
There aren't really decision points today. We were working on this paper. We had it largely done, but then we made some tweaks last minute. So, I came to you late yesterday afternoon when we were, we had some last-minute things we needed fixed. The chief did take time to sit down with some retirees to hear historically from them perspectives on prior attempts to consolidate and the history of mutual aid and auto-aid agreements. But the chief has been here for a long time, and so, he's familiar with a lot of that. But just to get different perspectives, he did take time to, one afternoon, sit down with area fire chiefs and kinda talk through some of these options just to get perspective and their ideas. I don't think they had time for a great deal of in-depth, but they did have thoughts and ideas that they shared with the chief, and those have been captured as well to kinda get the perspective from the other chiefs as to the options that were kinda stated today. So, there's a lot of information to absorb. As you can see, we provide a lot of assistance to, into Wichita. Wichita reciprocates, perhaps not at the same level that we provide aid, but they do reciprocate and provide aid back. And then, when we get into the county with the volunteer departments, while we are providing aid to them, they're reciprocating, but the volumes are significantly dramatically minuscule relative to the big population center, which is Wichita. Derby is another large, fairly large, with a full-time paid, a full-time paid fire department. And the relationship there is one that if they're helping us, and they need, they've come into our county to a certain point, and they need assistance, we'll backfill them and vice versa. They'll backfill our stations. If we get tied up in a fire way out west, they'll come in and backfill some of our stations near them. So, it's a complex relationship, but there are things that can be done to look to the future. The bottom line is, as we go forward, we continue to lose ground, taxing properties that provide property tax support in the district will diminish the capacity there. And either these municipalities will have to step up and increase the size and capacity of their departments, or the county will flounder with some of the fire issues. So, that's kinda what we tried to capture in this paper. And as you read through it, hopefully, it'll give you more insight than we were able to do globally today.
Commissioner Unruh and I have had two discussions with Mayor Longwell and Vice Mayor Frye, talking about whether or not that they are interested in any type of consolidation, and they indicated they were. But I think we need to get a working group together of some sort that comprises not only Wichita, but Sedgwick County. Talk to Derby, see if they're interested. And also, talk to the other volunteer fire departments, get them involved in any kind of a working group so that we can look at the possibility of consolidation and what that would mean and what the details would be on that. So, as long as the City of Wichita indicates that they're interested, I think we ought to move forward and try and put together a working group sooner rather than later, especially if it requires any kind of legislation. We're gonna have to get our legislative platform together in the near future for the next session, so we probably ought to start talking about that. Along with Wichita, one of the concerns I've got right now, and I keep reading in the newspaper about they're pulling some of their folks out of our fire station over on the east side. It's not a fire station that I'm real familiar with, 'cause it's a long way from my district. But it does pause, give me pause to concern on how much that we'll be then responding and additionally inside of the City of Wichita for areas that we're not getting paid for. So, I think we need a little bit more details for the commissioners on what the impact of that decision by the City of Wichita is gonna have on our fire district, number one, especially financial considerations if we have to continue to go into the City of Wichita because they're pulling some of their folks out of one of the fire stations.
Can we talk about that just a second? Can you show on the map and explain what's going on before they pulled it out?
Also, I can do that, Mike. I wanted to say, I met with Chief Snow yesterday, and they are going to leave a squad there. So, they're not gonna totally pull out of that station, but they are gonna put a squad there.
And what's a squad?
It's a rescue truck, which is two people. So, they'll have a captain and a firefighter.
So, what are they taking?
They have an engine in there right now, so that engine will leave.
But that means if they've got a fire, we still gotta fight it.
We'll still be there, absolutely. Yes.
But a squad can respond to a variety of other emergency calls.
Absolutely. One of the busiest trucks, yes. Medicals, and they can respond to fires and grass fires as well.
Okay.
So, out east here, 38th area, we're right there. I mean, so, the City of Wichita is right there, and we're all around there. And we're running those calls along with them right now. And you're right, things I want to say, if they pull out, who's gonna run those calls? Well, we're most likely gonna be there because we're so close. But talking to Chief Snow yesterday, they are gonna put a squad in there. They're not gonna leave it totally abandoned.
So, Chief, currently, that station is on Sedgwick County property, it's not in City of Wichita. Currently, they have a squad and an engine there.
No, just an engine right now.
Just an engine. So, they're gonna flip-flop, they're gonna put a squad over instead of an engine.
That's what I understand.
They did, in recent budget discussions, indicate that they were setting aside $41 million potentially to rebuild four police stations, four police sub-stations, but also five fire stations. They didn't indicate which ones, but we're making an assumption that one of those five fire stations that would fall out of that $41 million allocation would be a station out east on property that they've owned for many years and consider building a station where that at, Chief?
Central and Bristol.
Yeah, Central and Bristol. They've owned that property for a decade or more. We've talked about it, that may be one where they relocate resources from that.
That's just east of Greenwich for people that live well out in the west, so...
Again, my concern on that is, if we're going to have to then pick up the workload in the City of Wichita with no reimbursement because of their decision. Also, as long as we're talking about Wichita, have we received any final reports on the Andale fire?
I have not received any final reports. As far as, we did a PIA, which is a post-incident analysis, and Wichita did not attend because they had an investigation going on. But we did have a PIA for the other members that were at that fire.
Was the state fire marshal involved in that?
No. It's just a local-level PIA.
Is there gonna be state fire marshal involvement in that?
I am not aware of that.
Didn't the Mayor of Andale request that?
Yes, the Mayor of Andale, not on our side, but the Mayor of Andale did want the state fire marshal to look into that fire, yes.
Well, why don't we ask him to look into it?
The state fire marshal came down to investigate the cause of the fire in conjunction with our investigators. I spoke to the investigator at the time, and he indicated that his focus would be solely on that purpose. And then, the mayor reached out and state fire marshal asked him to investigate in a way, and we have not heard anything as to investigate, as to that investigation.
Well, I've got some serious concerns about that fire, in fact, that we needed that equipment which Wichita responded with. We need to know that in the future, if we have a fire like that, that we're either gonna get their capability to help us with the mutual aid agreements we have in place, or are we gonna have to go on our own? My concern is that in West Sedgwick County, we have large churches out there that are gonna require this if we have a fire. We have grain elevators that are gonna require this if we have a fire. We've got a four-story hotel going in in Goddard that would require a huge apparatus if we had a fire. If we can't rely on the four apparatus that Wichita has, we're gonna have to decide whether or not we need to buy one ourselves, which would be ridiculous when there's four of them sitting in Wichita. So, I need to know what their response is from their report, from their investigation or the fire marshal's investigation, so that we can make an informed decision on how we're gonna protect our citizens. I'm particularly concerned because West Sedgwick County is where most of the type of structures are gonna be that we would need this type of apparatus for. And if we can't rely on it, we're gonna have to do something ourselves. So, we're gonna have to make a decision one way or the other. I hate to go to my other four commissioners and say we need to spend a million dollars for a piece of apparatus to go out there to protect our citizens, but if that's what it takes, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Can you speak a little bit to the existing aid agreement between Wichita and Sedgwick County and how we respond?
Sure.
How we respond?
Currently, we have an enhanced first responder. So, Wichita will send a single resource outside of the city to assist us, and we'll also do the same thing. But what we've done personally and with the Sedgwick County Fire District is, we try not to dump our stations so that we leave available units and continual fire protection for our tax base. City of Wichita will send us a single resource if we ask for it. And then, if we ask more, they will probably send us more if we ask for it. But per the agreement, item 14, they're responsible to send a single resource if we request it.
Were you on-site at Andale?
Yes, sir.
What did we ask them for?
We asked for a aerial or some type of elevated device to assist with us because we had such a tall structure.
Were you the on-scene commander?
No, I was not.
Who was the on-scene commander?
Keith Wilson, Division Chief Keith Wilson. And he did request...
Did he ask Wichita to stay?
Our other division chief, who was a safety officer at the time, he did communicate that he would like for them to stay five more minutes because we're about to put the fire out. And then, the return communication was, they said they cannot stay, they have to go.
What was the impact of them leaving?
Well, of course, we had to fight the fire longer. You know, we don't have the reach. They had the highest reach at that time, so we had to call for Newton to come, who had a 100-foot aerial. And our quints only are about 75 feet. And so, yes, we needed something larger to continue fighting the fire.
But the fire burned for an additional two hours that probably wouldn't have had to burn if we'd have kept that aerial up there. Is that the reward that I've received? I don't know if it's true or not. I'll verify that.
I can't put a time limit, but I'll say the fire, yes, continued to burn because we did not have that reach or that capability. And then, we had to keep firefighters fighting the fire longer as well, so...
I'm not trying to point blame at anyone. What I'm trying to do is figure out how that we're gonna protect our citizens. And if we can't rely on them to protect our citizens, we're gonna have to go it alone.
Yes, sir. When I met with Chief Snow yesterday, we meet on a regular basis. First thing she did was apologize for the incident and assured me that that had never happened in the history of Wichita Fire Department, and she assured me that it wouldn't happen again.
But it happened.
Yes, sir.
We have facts.
Yes.
Promises don't work. Commissioner.
So, all this information that he just talked about, is that in a report somewhere?
Yes, we have it in the firehouse report.
Okay, I'd like to get a copy of that.
Okay.
So, we had an agreement that they'll send us something, and they did. Why did, I mean, do we know who made them return all the way out? Have we found that out?
I don't know who 100% made them return, but Tammy did explain that one of their staff did go without permission.
How did they go without permission?
I don't know.
I mean, listen, this cannot be swept under, you know, I know I'm talking to people, and it didn't happen in my district, but I don't want it to happen in my district, and there's a lot of questions out there. People are concerned about this, and they're complaining because, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the retired chiefs got suspended, not because he left the scene, because he went to the scene. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
That's messed up. And we need to have that in report, and we gotta write that up, and we can't sweep this underneath, I mean, they had their deal where they were using their equipment to do a rap video, and they swept that under the rug. Well, that's fine, because that didn't affect anyone. But this thing can't be swept underneath the rug. We need to find out exactly who made the decision. You can't fix a problem promising it won't happen in the future and let you know exactly who made that decision and why. This is, this is, I'm sorry, you know, I know it was in his district, but this is not right. And we spend so much of our time inside the City of Wichita, helping them out, as you know, and we can't rely on them for one piece of equipment when they're already there? I mean, I need to know if they're in my area, are they gonna abandon us then? I think every commissioner ought to be concerned about this. This is not, this is, we gotta, we gotta get some absolute answers as far as I'm concerned. And I've got people asking me, they wanna know what happened.
Sure.
Okay? And I mean, they're getting most of their information from social media.
I would say that's outside the scope of the chief's authority.
Well, that's where we need to be, that's where the commission needs to say, listen, Mayor and City Manager, we need absolute answers as to what happened.
I don't know that we need...
Don't sugarcoat it. We need to know who made it, when, and why, and then we'll address it, we'll move on.
I think we need an investigation by the state fire marshal. I need to know some details. I need to know how much longer that fire burned because of that. I need to know how much more the damage was caused. I heard estimates that it was probably a million dollars worth of damage when the, it was, the fire apparatus was still on-site. I heard that the damage at this point is up to $3 million possibly. That's the rumor that I get. But we haven't got a report. So, if it caused two more million dollars of damage for them pulling out, that's a significant amount that people in my district are concerned about.
So, who do we have to direct to have the state fire marshal? Mike? It sounds like this is something that the commission...
Well, we need to find out the status of the Mayor of Andale's request.
Sure.
And we will get back to you and let you know.
But more than one government body can request an investigation. So, I think we need to put more fuel to this and do our own and request it.
Or be an active participant in that.
Well, that's fine, but...
Somehow, I mean...
But nothing's gonna happen. So, if I may, I was at Costco on Sunday, and one of the top leaders of the Wichita Fire Union came to me and said that we need to stand up because he feels like the Wichita Fire Department is walking all over us. And he specifically mentioned that East Wichita Fire Station and said that Sedgwick County's gonna pick up the bill. Well, I think that's absolutely unacceptable, and I, it sounds like you met with Chief Snow yesterday, Chief Leake?
Yes.
And did you tell her that was unacceptable, or did you just say, "We're a doormat"? What'd you tell her?
Oh, absolutely not.
And so, what was her response?
As far as the response, as far as...
Did you say you are not gonna take that? You are not gonna replace an engine with a squad? Did you tell her that?
No, I did not tell her that.
Well, why not?
Because at that time, it hasn't been done yet. This is just something that she's saying is going to happen.
No, the city council says it's a done deal.
Okay, see, I was not aware of that.
So, I feel like we need to have a little bit more...
Sure.
Powerful message.
It is our fire station.
I understand that, but are we gonna pick up the bill for more Wichita fires because they're pulling that engine out?
I would hope not.
According to the Wichita Fire Union, we will.
Right, I would hope not.
According to Wichita, we will. We have to stop this, Chief, and I don't feel like you are fighting hard enough on behalf of the fire district to stop this. Stop this. Whether it's, whether, sorry Rusty, I'm talking. I just feel like we need somebody to advocate harder. And if it needs to be us, it can be us. But you shouldn't just receive and file.
Right.
That, that, this frankly disrespectful, uh, response from Wichita on a, on a litany of issues. And I'm tired of it, Chief.
Sure.
I'm tired of it. And I want to see some more fighting.
Right.
Because they're going to be doing a lot more. They will be doing a lot more if we don't stand up.
Right. They had an engine in there already, so.
I know they do, but they're talking about removing it.
Right. They're not, they're not talking about abandoning the station.
From that station, do you respond in the city of Wichita?
Yes.
We've already got data that you presented this, that we're going in twice as much as they're helping us.
Yes.
If they pull, if they pull their engine out, is that going to be three times as much we're going to be going in there?
I, I don't think so. I think they will be responding, but we'll most likely respond as well. I agree, it's not a perfect situation, but it's because of where we're located.
Not a perfect situation, it's, it's reprehensible, Chief. Absolutely egregious.
Right, should they be there? I say no, it's our fire station.
I think, yeah, but look at the map, it's surrounded, I mean, you can make an argument, it should be a Wichita fire station instead of, okay, it's surrounded by city.
Sure.
We'd be better off selling it to Wichita and pulling our unit out. The only thing worth pronging to is in Wichita there.
But you know, we've had a bad moment when, when I'm being stopped by Wichita firemen at Costco. Saying that we need to stop this.
Yeah.
This, this is critical.
I, I don't understand my role in stopping that.
Well, you need to tell us where to find, you need to tell us.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Where we are being taken advantage of. And I haven't heard this from you, I've heard this story from, what?
Well, I usually, I usually give my information to the public safety director, but if you want me to deal directly with you, I can do that.
Well, I just think we should be afforded this information somehow. Doesn't seem like that's a lot to ask.
Commissioners will bring two things back to you. One, uh, the how we make a formal request with the State Fire Marshal to investigate the Andale fire. Two, we will come back to you with a plan of action on what we do with this, with this, uh, fire station and the result of the city of Wichita pulling out of it. We owe you two things.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you, Chief. We have to make a decision on whether to buy a, a hundred-foot aerial.
Correct.
And if we have to buy a hundred-foot aerial, where are we going to put it?
The chief was already looking at that, so we will owe you that. That's somewhat tied with too, under this consolidation discussion. If that goes anywhere, then it's a, it's a moot point. But we certainly will look at it as what we need to do for an interim solution, if not long-term solution.
All right.
I mean, it seems to me that there was an egregious situation happening in Andale. And they have admitted it and apologized and that doesn't, that doesn't fix what just happened. But they're still our partner on all these mutual aids and, um, what's your, what's your other category?
Automatic aid.
Automatic aids. And so they're still, in a large degree, our partner in protecting the citizens of Sedgwick County. So I don't want to just knee jerk and start, buy a million-dollar truck and tell it, "Let's see how we can work this out. We have their apology and their commitment, it ain't going to happen again." There's no need for citizens of Sedgwick County to buy a fifth hundred-foot ladder truck, at least from, from perspective I have now. It may change when we get more, more data. I do think we ought to have the State Fire Marshal look into it. I'm, I, and I think we ought to be able to state definitely what the facts are and the people that are responsible for that are held to some sort of culpability for it. But I don't, I don't think, just on the basis of this incident, that we have to just totally redesign everything. I also know that out there at Station Thirty-Eight, we do respond to a lot of county fires out there and a lot of them in Crestview, which is not city. And so we still have a need for that. If the city of Wichita does what they've said they do and move almost two miles down central to that ground they have and pit up, put up a nice, that's going to relieve a lot of the pressure off that particular station. I don't know whether they plan to move that truck, but if they move it up there north on Webb Road, engine, whatever you call it. If you move that up on North Webb Road, where we're going to vacate space for our new EMS post, that'll also provide another level of protection. So we've got a lot of moving parts and we need to hold people accountable, but I, I don't want to get too reactive. Let's, let's be smart and move through this, um, in, in, in a way that we've got good analysis and, and think of a good plan. Now, while, after I said that, I would, back to kind of the original conversation we were starting with, do you want to see if some of our guests have anything to say about some of the potential options that were provided here? I mean, if they want to say something now, I mean, because the changes we're discussing are pretty much sea change. I mean, they're, they're major changes and, um, and it will affect you and so now, now'd be a good time to get a comment. If, if, but Mr. Chairman, whatever you want to do.
Mayor Summers, did you have anything you'd like to talk about?
I would say if we're, uh, we use more information too, maybe some of the information that might be covered in your, in your white paper because that might affect us in terms of the information you have and how we relate. So I think the white paper would be, you know, if it were available to us at some point, it would be very valuable so we could.
Certainly. And you can provide the white paper to Mayor Summers and the other fire departments.
So.
Go Witch, you all have anything?
I would just say, Colish, we're committed to working, continuing with our partners in public safety preserve for all our areas. We're interested in maintaining our relationship on the line.
Okay, were there any other cities here that I missed?
Chief Bill Mulraine, um, based on our observation from Mulraine's perspective that maybe we had, Chief Lou, the other chiefs, we feel that those that were present, the status quo, are doing what's best for the area. I know speaking for us and our partnership with Derby and Southeastern Park, Sedgwick County and more than Sumter County, we have great partnership. I think a lot of you came out of that meeting, uh, with our chiefs with communication, just making sure we're on the same page, resource-wise, uh, making sure we have that continual commitment and understanding. We don't want, don't the station and say we're a long-term department, it's under control. It's the management of the scene to get those resources back. We felt about, about with the consensus that it's status quo, it's good to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other cities here that I missed? And we're talking about, just something that I registered when, when Chief was talking. When we're coordinating with each other, we're talking about going to some different type of radios also. Do we let all the other fire departments know that we're talking about going to some different type of radios?
Yes, we've all met before collectively to talk about the different radios, yes.
Okay, so they're aware of it, go, they can budget it into their budget?
Absolutely.
Good. Okay. All right.
I have some questions.
How?
Thank you. I'm looking at the, the pie charts in the, in the presentation and I see there, the cities are mentioned there, but I don't see anything talking about the fire district versus non-fire district response. Do we have that data in a breakdown exactly how much of our response is to the taxpayers that are paying for the fire district versus those that are receiving benefits without paying in?
On page nine, I believe it is, but if you don't have the white paper, sir.
I do have it.
We have a lot more data in the actual white paper that shows total calls, the number of calls that were aid given, the number of calls were aid received. We break down quite a bit more than what we're able to in the presentation.
This breaks it down to the fire district versus non-fire district response?
Total call, total calls minus calls where aid were given.
Okay. I'll get, I'll, I'll look at that data here in a little bit, but I'd like to make a couple of, I guess I have some questions and some comments as well. When someone says consolidation, that, that brings to mind a lot of different ideas. And I think there's been some negotiation going on that has been kind of maybe, maybe between the mayor and the commissioner. I don't know who's all doing exactly what type of discussion here. So I'm coming in from not a, not, not a position of knowledge, okay? But consolidation, I think, as I've heard recently, was something to the effect that we would essentially hand over the revenue from the fire district and then we would contract with Wichita, provide fire protection services to the, for the fire district. Is that what's being discussed?
Not amongst us, no.
No?
I'd say negotiation is too serious of a word. We've had, you guys thinking about consolidation, yeah, it'd be a good idea. Well, we got to sit down and talk about it. That's about as far as we've gone. There have been, um, a couple of one-sentence saying, "Well, we, maybe we could do this or maybe we could do that." But at least in my presence, that's about as far as it's gone. It's very superficial, other than the fact that, you know, we probably ought to talk about consolidation. That's how far we've gone.
You know, along that line, I don't know if there's a standard for how much fire protection you have for, for a population that, if you analyze our demographics in terms of our, our, our number of square miles we need to protect and, and the number of people living here, if there's any type of, uh, I guess a calculation that would be made for the entire county to find out, are we well above recommended numbers? Are we, are you meeting those numbers, you know, on money or? That's kind of a starting point is, how much, how much do we actually have as a whole? Are we, are we truly having too much? Because I think the idea of consolidation is that you're more efficient by having, I guess, the right things in the right places and you're duplicating, and you're going to duplicate some of that. So that's where the efficiency comes from, is by eliminating, elimination of some duplication perhaps that may be in place today. Is that, is that analysis been done by this or by anybody else?
Well, not by this paper, but years ago, we did a station location study to address the population and also the deployment model, making sure you have so many people at the scene. That has been done, but not as far as what you're saying.
And just for point of discussion, when, when we use the word consolidation, I guess the, the sister to that would be a, a model where we would consolidate, um, into a, into another jurisdiction of some sort. Other words, we'd have a fire board, they're elected or appointed, it'd have its own taxing authority. And they would provide services to most of the county. I, my, one of my questions is, is are, are smaller cities, Derby's not small, but let's talk about Derby for just a minute. Would they be forced in or can they, can they opt out? I think that under home rule, they would have the right to opt out. So even consolidation might solve a Wichita-Sedgwick County issue, but it may not solve, you know, anything beyond that potentially. So there's a lot of, a lot of questions I have on that. And I've also heard that you can't consolidate debt. Also, that if you did have a taxing unit consolidation, that they'd have to have one tax for the entire jurisdiction that's represented by that consolidation. So we would probably have something other than eighteen and they would have something other than eleven or twelve, whatever their equivalent taxes are. And so I think there's some barriers to that type of consolidation. Just, I guess I want to say that, you know, it's, it's a buzzword, people talk about this a lot. Especially during election times, people say consolidate, it makes a lot of sense. But it's, it gets messy when you start bringing up these types of issues. So, um, when you start, start saying the word consolidation, you almost need to start out by saying, "What, what do you mean by consolidation?" Because there's lots of different ideas there. I have, uh, one thing I've been bringing up lately and I'll bring it up again. I, I think that we ought to continue to drive towards the efficiency in our fire district. One of the things we, we do, most of our, most of our calls again are still medical calls, I assume, right? And because we do have more fire stations and more fire, fire personnel on duty, typically if there's a medical call and you know it's a medical call, we should not send a fire truck. I would like to see something other than a fire truck in the fire stations that could respond to a medical call with EMTs, with appropriate equipment to, not to transport, but to provide first aid and first responder care to someone who's, who needs a medical call. That's a, that would be an investment on the front end, but it would save us money on the back end. And I think we ought to, I think we need to talk about investing in having a, a different type of response vehicle in our fire stations that would be, um, the, the first responder call to a, to a known medical call. I think Wichita is having similar discussions in their fire stations. We, I've been talking about this for several years now, I think we need to get the ball rolling. And right now, I feel like we're not, it's just, it's a discussion on the horizon, but we're not really moving any, anywhere to, to make this happen. Clearly, there's efficiencies that would be gained by that. And I think we owe it to our tax, our taxpayers and to our, our city and our county to, to find a way to deliver services for the least cost. And this would certainly be in that direction. It doesn't impact, it doesn't impact the quality of care, it doesn't impact how many, how many people we're paying or the salaries. This provides a difference in how you provide that care. I think we ought to talk about that some. I don't know if that's mentioned in this at all. Again, I haven't read this yet because I just got it, but I, I think we ought to talk about that a little bit deeper. It's been a popular discussion lately. I, I don't know if there's a model out there that talks about merging fire department, fire district number one and EMS. I keep hearing this. I see lots of problems with that, but I'd just like to put that to bed and find out if, if it's possible, what would it look like? If it's not possible, let's get that off the table because it, it's a discussion that's taking a lot of our, a lot of our time and, and all that. But I, I see problems with the idea. I guess I'd like to see that seriously considered, but you know, either, either make that something we can consider as an option or let's get that off the table because it's not an option. I'd like to know which way that's going to fall.
I, I can address the comment about the medical only.
Sure.
Because we're so isolated and we're so far apart and help is, is a long way away. When we just strictly go to medical, then we reduce that capability of fighting fires. Right now, we can do both. If we take that capability away, we're just doing medical. And then now, we're behind the eight ball trying to get another truck out there. When if we keep those same capabilities we have now, we can address whatever situation comes up.
And I understand if it's a car accident and you don't know what you're dealing with, I understand the response of a fire, fire, fire truck. I get that.
Right.
Because it might be a fire. But if someone says, "I have chest pains," or someone says, "They fell down, they can't get up."
Right.
Or, you know, those types of things.
And, and in that scenario, we can address that concern and then if a fire comes in, that unit can then go and address that fire where a medical only will not be able to do that.
Yeah, I understand. Certainly worth, I think it's worthy of discussion and I do see the downside of that. But I think we are, we're sending the most expensive vehicles on calls that don't need that, don't need that equipment on site. So I guess that's the point. And there is a, there is, there is a consequence for making this decision, I, I do understand that. I'm curi- I'm curious about the legislative solution because I, I think there's an issue of double taxation. If you were to freeze those boundaries, and I understand, I guess it can be done, but there will be people eventually will be inside the fire district that are also inside of a city. And my question is, how do you, how do you manage that issue of someone being double taxed? I think there's a, I guess, I guess a concern about how, other places that have done that, do they rebate? Will taxes back to one of them?
No, they did it a long time ago and they simply divided their county up into a certain number of districts. I don't know how exactly how many there are. And so it doesn't matter where the city to go, they've got six fire districts. And, and they levy that tax for that purpose. And, and so they don't, they don't run it through the city, city government or even county government, they run it through the fire district.
Well, I guess.
Just like we have our fire district and the mill levy, uh, that, that. But they did it very early on before they allowed that growth. It might, it might have been more difficult to try that now.
I mean, I, I do have concern about the dwindling, uh, fire district. I think that the number of taxpayers continues to shrink because of annexation. So that is a concern, but if you do try to freeze that, then ultimately when some, someone is paying into the fire district and they continue to pay into it when they are annexed into, say, the city of Wichita, and they pay the, the normal mill levy for the city of Wichita, which, which includes fire protection services, now they're paying it twice. So to me, that's a concern, I don't know how to manage that. But I, I think that may be something we need, we need to have an answer to that question because I don't, I think that's a, that, that, that's a pretty big barrier to get past. Just, just a thought. I, so I guess in terms of options, I don't, I have concerns about that. I have some concerns about training. Um, I, I guess I'll ask, you know, the RFTC was something we, we talked about a couple of years ago and with the hope that we would have some regional training and then on how that's working, do you have any, any response to that?
The current MOU for the RTC is that at the beginning of the year, we set training for the entire year. So that's the way the current MOU is written.
But, but do you know, do you know right, you know, at the first of the year, how many classes you're going to have? Or how many, how many firefighter, firefighters you need to train and how, that type of thing?
It's not optimal for us, no. We would be, we would like it better to be able to do it differently, but that's what we have right now. And yes, it, it can be a little difficult to try to plan for the whole year. The specialty teams do it a little bit better, but your stations have a harder time.
Could you quantify how many, let's say, how many hours a year will you receive of training from the RTC? I'd like to see those numbers.
Sure.
Because I think, I do think that, that, that regional training and training with other fire departments that are going to be alongside us in an actual incident, I think that's, that's better to have that commonality. Let's see here. Um, let's see here. In terms of charges for services, that's going to go both ways. I mean, if, if we provide services outward, the idea is we're going to keep track of it and somehow assess some type of a bill to those particular cities that receive benefits that are not paying to the fire district, that we would somehow try to recoup that revenue and then vice versa, if they were to provide more to us, that we'd, they'd send us a bill?
Absolutely, they, we would receive a bill from them, yes.
I guess my first response to that is, we had, we had this discussion a while back, a few months ago, and I think that that kind of blew up as not a good, not a good option. I'd like just to reject that outright and say, "I think it's messy." And I think that, um, it gets into a tit-for-tat type of discussion trying to keep track of who owes who for what, and, and I, I think it's, it might even lean into the idea that we're not going to provide a service because we're not going to get paid, or because there's conflict between, you know, the, these bills, whether they're just bills or not, and I just think it's really messy. So I, I don't like the idea and I'd like to, I guess to me, that's not really a good option here either. And then finally, I'll just tell you, I have, I brought this up before, uh, at least with some of the staff, and I'm not sure that it's worth the place, the right place to bring it up, I'll bring it up now. I think there's another option that I would like to see us ex, uh, explore, and that would be that we would essentially, um, continue to provide fire protection services to the fire district for the taxes that they levy. Um, the fire district is, is a taxing jurisdiction only, they would, uh, remit, give that revenue over to Sedgwick County. The county would have a contract with the fire district. We would, we would have, uh, fire personnel and apparatus in stations primarily to provide services back to the fire district, that's why they would exist. Um, it's a different model, but if they go into the city and provide services, uh, we know right now the city provides a lot of revenue to Sedgwick County, uh, seventy-six percent of the citizens in Sedgwick County are actually residents of Sed, of Wichita. So to the extent that they're receiving some type of benefit from a, a county fire department, not a fire district, but a fire department, um, in my opinion, if there's, if there's some, uh, loss to the county by providing services to Sedgwick County, wherever they happen to be, even inside the city of Wichita, to me, that's okay. I would not worry about that. So the, the idea would be that we would simply have a, again, it would require legislation because we can't do it under current law, but if you had a county fire department and its only purpose was to contract back to the fire district, we provide mutual aid to cities that have their own fire departments, that would be, in my opinion, would be, would be okay, because they are receiving benefits and they're also paying taxes. And so to the extent that the county itself may lose a little bit of revenue, um, we're providing services back to the same people who are paying the actual, actually paying the taxes. It's a different way of doing the exact same thing, and it does solve the problem forever because then you've got a connection between the county and the fire district itself, and so whatever shortfall that the district might have, the county could pick it up. Um, in my opinion, that was, that's a much better model, we ought to explore that as a legitimate option to solve this thing for, for the long term. If I haven't explained that very well, please come ask me, because I, I have thought about this for several years now. I think it's a solution that we ought to explore. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? One final comment before we move on to the rest of it. Uh, I know that Commissioner Howell gave you, wanted to remove some options and add some other options. First of all, I think removing options at this point, when we haven't even had any working group put together, is not a good idea. We need to have all the options on the table. If there are other options, as he recommended, those can be added to it, but we haven't even put together any kind of a working group to look at consolidation, uh, and at this point, for us to be making decisions based on, um, lack of, uh, full staffing is probably a bad idea. Well, with that, uh, thank you, Chief, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
What else do you have for us this morning before I ask people what they got?
Uh, Commissioner, I, I would suggest here in a couple of weeks, once you've had a chance to look at this, we get back together in a workshop and get a little more into the details of what this shows, uh, and potentially look at Commissioner Howell's option to add it. Uh, I don't think that's, uh, right now in this one, or we need to refine an option that we had, but anyway, um, I think in a few weeks, what, after budget adoption, we come back together in a workshop and actually get down a little more into the details of the report that you have. Now, we owe you the three, uh, the three items, um, with the state fire marshal, the East Fire Station Thirty-Eight, and also a hundred-foot aerial study, whether we get a new or, uh, adjust our strategy to support it, to have redundant capability. We owe you those three things. That's, and also we will push out the white paper to our partners.
Good. All right. Commissioner Renza, do you have anything else? Commissioner O'Donnell, you have anything else? Commissioner O'Donnell, anything else? Mr. Howell, no? Uh, I've got a couple of things before we go around the room. First of all, don't forget, we can vote right now, walk across the street, cool, you can go on the Sedgwick County website and you can get to the point, whether you can print your own ballot so that you know who's on it. Uh, now, I know that two-thirds of the state of Kansas are voting, are running for governor, but there are some other, uh, things that are on there right now, uh, so take a look at it, uh, if you want to know who, who, uh, your candidates are before you go over, it works well, uh, but main thing is vote. Uh, next thing I have is that, uh, we're, we've got the KAC Annual Conference that's coming up on October fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. We have a requirement by their bylaws to, uh, if we want to cast a, a vote, uh, that we have to notify them. I, I don't believe Commissioner Howell's going to the KAC. I think everyone else is going, aren't they? Got you. Commissioner O'Donnell isn't? Are you going? Commissioner Renza to the KAC conference?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Where are you going?
When is that again?
It's October fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Probably not.
Probably not. How about you, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will attend.
Very good.